Take care. Bye.
All right, now let's join over here. Okay. Well, that's not what I wanted to do. Uh, let's go over here.
Here we go, right here. I'm sorry, I do have.
You do have one. Today's the fourth. That's where's, what's that? That's not what I want. Today, no, today's the third. Select Board Agenda. Oh, this is gonna make noises. We'll try to fix it. So then I should probably leave myself closed unless. Okay, so we are being recorded. Does Joanne have her recorder down here? She doesn't.
No, she didn't.
I'm gonna send her a message. Joanne, 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 Joanne. I know, well, I know it's printing all that stuff as pain in the, in the butt. Okay. Oh, um, feel free to take the host back, Christopher. I just made myself host so I could, um, let people in here if I needed to.
Oh, yeah, sure thing.
All right, perfect. Um, Joanna's printing, um, the Excel stuff for us for budget. I just wanted to see if the recorder was here before we started. Are you record? So we hit record for the meeting. Um, I, does it, did the recording stay in Zoom? I just wanna make sure Joanne has a recording.
Yeah, so there should be a local recording in Zoom.
Okay. Over there, okay, perfect. All right, so, um, we'll start, go through our regular agenda and then at six, we're gonna meet with finance. Um, so we have some minutes, but Joanne said, uh, hold off. They haven't been reviewed, so I would make motion to table, um, the meeting minutes of the April 4th, 11th and 25th until next meeting.
Sure.
Discussion?
Yeah.
On favor?
All right.
Hi. All right, um, audience participation. You guys are just here for the, for the show. Um, okay, so then we've got, um, we've got finance, we've got reports, but we're not gonna hear from the finance committee yet. Oh, this is department reports. Oh, this is for, are these the reports for Mary or Doris or? I'm confused. Um.
Well, that department reports, that's the meeting between us, Christopher and the financial.
It says Select Board Town Final Draft, oh, Budget Review. Okay, so I guess we'll wait on that.
Right.
Okay, so action items. We've got, um, agreement between Blanford, Chester, Huntington, Middlefield, Montgomery and Russell with respect to the formation of the Gateway Regional School District. So this is finally ready to be signed. It's been in the works for a while now. This is the updated, um, regional agreement. Joanna, I think you accidentally found where all the Zoom recordings have been going. And I'll show you after the meeting.
Good.
They're all just on Zoom, so I'll show you what was there. Okay, so, um, this is our copy design. Each town will get one. Um, I don't have, I've looked over it a couple of times at the school committee meetings. I don't have any questions or additions or anything. Yeah, I know a lot of work went into it and. All right, uh, is there a second to approve the? Agreement among the towns, uh, for the regional district, for Gateway Regional District? Was not very fluent. Uh, town of Blanford. All in favor?
Hi.
I have, I almost forgot that part. Five, three, twenty-two. Recording. Okay. That'll be Joanne's pile, we'll start over there. All right, so next up, we have the, um, cyber coverage application from Maya. So, so our insurance company and they're looking to cover this large number. To establish.
Uh, Cara, there, there might have been a miscommunication on that, um, cuz I'm not sure that needs your signature at this point.
Okay.
I, I need to talk to Joanne about, there's a few items we still need to fill in on that.
Okay.
So I would, uh.
Because I was gonna take me about 10 minutes to read through.
It's quite lengthy. Um, fortunately, Steve Barlow with Novus has been really helpful in getting us, you know, getting it all filled out. Um, but I need to talk to Joanne cuz there's still a few outstanding items in it.
Okay, thank you. So we'll add that to action item for next week. I'll leave that there. All right, so now we have a bunch of appointments. Um, let's see, do we wanna do these? Did we decide we can do them all together?
Well, there's one I'd like to talk about here.
Okay, so the first, I'll make a motion to reappoint Eric Kernship CPA's Town Accountant.
That's the one.
One I wanna.
So, um, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. So is there a second for discussion?
Yeah.
Second for discussion.
Okay.
These are the people that have been piling the work on Joanne.
Yeah, so Christopher.
Reappoint him, I think we oughta have a talk with him.
Christopher, what was the result of the conversation that, um, you guys had about the work that's ended up on Joanne's desk?
Yeah, well, so first of all, I just, I just emailed Eric, um, and Janice, Barb and Sean, um, and just let them know that going forward, you know, when they do have, um, you know, emails about, you know, any of our accounts or anything like that, they should CC Joanne, so she's in the know. Um, so they're gonna be doing that going forward cuz that was, I know one thing that was a problem there. Um, and I do think, uh, you know, I, I need to sit down with them and have a conversation about, okay, here are the things that Joanne's been doing because you guys aren't in the building. Um, you know, how do we make sure that her job description, there's, you know, creep in her job description? Um, and, you know, that yours isn't actually getting smaller, so. Um, so I still need to have that conversation with Eric. Um, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, for, for me, they're extremely helpful. Um, you know, I just, I just talked to Janice about revenue projections. Uh, Eric was just extremely helpful getting this ARPA funding report completed last week. So I have no complaints, but I completely understand where Joanne's coming from.
Yeah, I mean, they've been amazing. We, they've been with us for a while now, um, and they, they certainly have been wonderful to work with. I just wanna make sure that, I think the other thing to check would be that our contract with them and to see that job description. If, if we're putting more on Joanne, um, if we're putting things on Joanne that's actually in their contract, um, cuz that's what we're paying them for. I, um, I don't mind holding off. I don't think that there's not much, I, I shouldn't say that. I definitely wanna reappoint them. Um, I think that they have been amazing to work with and they, they've really helped us turn around our financial situation. So I don't wanna not appoint them, but I do think it's worth a conversation with them.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will say, you know, I'm in the process of going through our contracts with, with Eric, um, with RRG, um, just to, just to make sure that we're actually, you know, getting the, the bang for our buck that we expect, um, and that they're adhering to, to what they agreed to. Um, so, yeah, well, well, I, I hear you though, and I hear Joanne's concerns, so we'll definitely need to address that.
Thank you, and there was definitely that shift once they weren't in the building anymore. I think that that was a big part of it. Um, all right, so there's a motion on the floor to reappoint. Uh, any more discussion?
I, I would like to hold off on appointing, just wait until what Christopher comes back with.
Yeah, we'll wait till next week.
Yeah. Uh, just table it because, you know, I'm not sure, like, uh, you've said, the perimeters that, uh, they're putting on Joanne. I mean, if she's gonna be doing their work, I wanna know what she's been doing with. And, you know, I think we need to be clear exactly what is expected, like you had said, Chris.
Okay. Um, so we can table that, um, we'll move that to an action item for next week then. Um, so I'd make a motion to reappoint Dave Hopson as member of the Agricultural Commission. Um, so how do we do this? Re, motion to reappoint Dave Hopson, Nicole Davio and Sue Racine as members of the Agricultural Commission for the terms, uh, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Okay, so then we've got, uh, motion to reappoint Barbara Langmore to Council on Aging for the term July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Uh, motion to appoint John, oh, it's gonna be. Thank you, as Electrical Inspector for the term July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Any discussion? Uh, all in favor?
All right.
Um, motion to reappoint Jennifer Jarrett as Deputy Election Warden for ju, the, the term July 1st, 2022 through July 30th, 2023.
June 30th.
Oh, sorry, June 30th. There we go, I appreciate it. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
We got Rebert instead of Robert. Motion to appoint, um, Robert Twymon as Registered Voters for the term July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025.
Sure.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Hi. All right, so we've gotta sign some of these, we'll hold off on that one. We're going to sign this one. All right. Okay, um, so next up, we have, um, the unfinished business from last meeting was the mosquito shield. So Christopher, you said you reached out to the place and they said they don't come to Blanford, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, so Rainey actually lives up in Goshen, uh, and I gave them our zip code and they said, oh, we actually don't treat Blanford. But additionally, they're really focused on residential, um, and so they were gonna have to check if they could even do, you know, I think the Watson Park is like 12 and a half acres. Um, so this, so these are just bigger properties than they usually deal with, I think.
Okay.
So, uh, I will keep looking for other potential quotes. Um, I don't know what time of year Brett would generally initiate this in the past, but I'm assuming it's coming up pretty soon.
Yeah.
So I will try and get a couple other quotes there. Um, and, uh, yeah.
I'm gonna reach out to Brett and ask him to, um, just give us a quote for the playground here.
Okay.
Wonder, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm just wondering. I know, um, I'm just wondering if the cost to do the, the entire park seems a little bit much.
Hmm.
Um, I think most of the people that are, you know, hanging out are hanging out in the playground area on the side. Um.
Right, and the park, park has a, a path that most people are sticking to, right? So it's.
Yeah, absolutely.
The wood as part of the park is the lower end.
Yeah.
And that's where you get the mosquitoes.
Yeah. So I'll ask Brett for a revised quote and then we can, um, compare it to the ones that you get for just this, just this side of the the area here.
Yeah, sounds good.
But also, there, the neighbors' chickens are out eating all the ticks right now from the park. So then I thought, why don't we just get chickens instead?
Or just punch a hole in their fence. Let the chickens wander over.
Can you just let your chickens eat in the park every day?
Is that mosquitoes probably gonna be detrimental to all sugar?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I think, no, I think the stuff that he said was pet friendly, so it should be okay. Um.
We don't need that.
We don't want, we don't wanna kill the chickens. All right, so that will be, um, next week with.
Oh, sure.
Is that a threat or a promise? A promise.
Um, one yesterday.
Soccer game? Not us. It was, it was a rough, rough, uh, let, last two. And we played in the rain, so that was fun. All right, um, so next up, we have, do we have any other unfinished business? No, all right, uh, new business. Go ahead, Christopher, with your town administrator report.
Okay, yeah, let me pull that up really quick. Um, the first item on it obviously is budget. Um, of course, tonight, we're gonna be having the FinCom come by at 6 o'clock and we'll, we'll go through the budget with them. Um, so I'll kinda hold off on talking about that until then. Um, let me pull up my report here. Give me two minutes. All right, hold on, I gotta track.
I think this other thing I have to sign is the thing that Byam was looking for. For the Cultural Council. Yes, okay, so. Five, three, twenty-two. Oh, I know what we need to talk about under unfinished business, but we can talk about it after, is the zoning thing. It's, it's all the scuttlebutt around town right now.
Well, we're meeting tonight at seven to finish up on that.
Okay.
Um, so I think Joanne should have printed this out. Um, maybe she didn't get a chance to just yet. Um, but, you know, one thing, and I believe Dave mentioned this, uh, last week, was we've been working with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on this municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. Uh, and the idea is basically to create an inventory of all of our dirt roads that have culverts and stream crossings and then kinda prioritize which ones need to, to be addressed before, you know, some kind of extreme weather event washes them out really badly. Um, so as part of that, uh, I've been collecting letters of support. I got one from the Conservation Commission. Uh, we're getting some from Gateway and Smith-Vogue because part of that plan is to have students actually learn how to do these field assessments of culverts.
Oh, cool.
And so I've got one for the Select Board. I don't, again, I don't know if Joanne printed it out, just hoping to get a signature tonight. Um, I do wanna mention that part of that, uh, is a statement of match. Um, so as in, you know, with the past, uh, MVP grants we've gotten, there's a in-kind 3% to 4% match. Um, so that would be, basically, it's, we have to reach 10%, but we're doing it with Chester and Middlefield. So if we each put in 3% to 4%, we should be good. Um, and that's just, just ours in terms of my time, Dave's time, um, and likely one or two other community members' time, so.
Um, I don't have a copy in front of me, but I can ask Joanne to print it unless, do you guys have a copy of the, not this, the letter of support?
No, no.
Okay, I'll get a copy and sign it and leave it on your desk. Do you need all of us to sign it, Christopher, or just one signature?
I think just, just one signature should be fine.
Okay.
Um, so they are, that, that application should be going out, uh, this week and then hopefully we'll be hearing back this summer and, you know, be able to kick off that process of documenting all of our different culverts and dirt roads that need, uh, that attention. Um, turning to the ADA Transition Plan, so I mentioned this a few weeks ago. Uh, we have a grant, uh, with PVPC, um, to look at, to basically to get a consultant to assess our town properties and see what kind of updates they need to be, um, accessible for people with disabilities. Um, they put together, uh, the bid package and we've gotten a couple bids back already. Um, I need to take time to review them, I just got them today. Um, so I'll have probably more updates on that tomorrow. Um, one item that I know, uh, Mary was very interested in, uh, the Town Common Project, uh, with GZA. Um, so I kind of got back in touch with GZA on this, um, and got, talked to, it's Anya Duffy over there, who's been kind of the, the point person for that Town Common Project. Uh, she basically gave me a list of remaining tasks. Um, you know, essentially, GZA had kind of completed their work. They came up with a design, um, and it sounds like there were, uh, over the winter, there were some conversations with fire and highway, um, where there might need to be some tweaks, um, because there wasn't necessarily room for vehicles to, to, you know, turn and have the correct radii, uh, on North Blanford Road. Um, so we're gonna need to, to talk, you know, that's gonna be a little process of seeing how we can tweak the design. Um, and then I've just listed here, you know, the subcontractor that GZA was working with. Um, they have a few remaining tasks, um, meeting with town staff and, and the design team. So hopefully, um, you know, what I'd like to be able to do is when we have budget a little bit more in the rear view, um, is kind of just kick off this process again, um, and go through these remaining tasks and hopefully get to a point where we have something that we can, that we can use to apply for further funding to actually, you know, start implementing some of these improvements that were, were discussed. Um, and, you know, Anya stressed that obviously all of this has to be done in conjunction with, you know, the big North Blanford Road project and then also the, the highway facility retrofit to, to be the new Fire Department. So we kind of, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah.
Um, but hopefully, uh, you know, we can kind of kickstart this again in the next few weeks. Um, and, and hopefully have all those kind of things fit together nicely.
Great, thank you.
Um, you had a question last week about community compact best practices. Uh, so I got in touch with Sean Cronin at, uh, the Division of Local Services. He said, we're, you know, we can apply an FY23 for additional funding. Um, but they would like to see that capital improvement plan come nearer to completion. Uh, and Sarah Cannon at the Collin Center had let me know that they anticipate that being complete in February or March. Um, so at that point, we would be able to go back out for additional funding.
Okay, and they have a list, um, do they put out a list of, like, possible projects?
Yeah, yep, there's a whole list of, of best practices to choose from. Um, I, I'd have to ask Sean, we, we've checked off a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
But I have to ask Sean which ones are remaining and, and see if there's something that we actually need or want to pursue.
Okay.
Um, and then lastly, in terms of grant stuff, um, I had mentioned this a few weeks ago. Uh, Russ LaPierre from the Animal Hospital was interested in getting ARPA funding to do some, an outdoor seating area for his, uh, facility there. Um, it actually looks like this Commonwealth Places Grant, um, that's available, might be a better fit. Um, so that's specifically a place-making grant for outdoor spaces. Um, it's really geared towards kind of the post-COVID era. Um, so I think, I'm, I'm gonna talk to Russ about that and I've, I've reached out to Ira at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission just to see if, okay, if we can use these funds, um, and what the process would be there. So I'll, I'll be talking to, to Russ about that and then hopefully we can use that ARPA money for, for something else. So, yeah. So we'll, we'll check back in on that. Um, all right, some procurement updates. Uh, Kathy just let me know moments ago that we received the bid from LaCrinzki, uh, for vocational transportation. They've signed off on that, so I'll, I'll send some more details over when I get a chance to look at that. Um, the Park Trust landscaping, um, so I took Josh's RFP from a few years ago and updated it. Um, I don't know if we wanna go through this now or if it makes sense to talk to, I don't know, Hoppy or someone else about, um, you know, the tasks in there. Um, there's a, you know, there was a series of tasks in one of the attachments and I assume some of them are outdated, um, because they're, you know, had to do with, um, substantially rehabilitating certain parts of the parks. Um, so I can, um, well, we can talk offline about that, that, the, the additional task there, but do we have a sense of the timing on that RFP? I know in the past, it had actually gone out in the fall, but I, I'm assuming we're hoping to send it out in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I would think so because I know we need to do the, um, you know, we'll have to do our cleanup before summer.
Right.
So, if you wanna send us the list, we might be able to help with, um, confirming what's been done and what needs to continue. Hoppy would know as far as like, um, he might know as far as like bicentennial or like town hall, but he would probably be a little more disconnected from Watson.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know Doug might have some insight into that, um, but we, the three of us should be able to help you and with Mary as well.
Gotcha, okay, I'll, I'll send that around and we can get those tasks, uh, revised and I'll try to get that sent out, uh, in short order since it is, it's warming up, so. Um, and then, of course, we already talked about the, the tick treatment, uh, for the town properties, uh, the, for the mowing RFP. I, I think I s, and I, I apologize, Cara, if you did send this, I missed it, but I think I still need a list of the town properties. I don't know. I don't know if John, maybe John has that, I could reach out to him.
Um, yes, I, you know what I'll do, I'll prob, probably text it to you.
Okay, that works.
Okay, sorry, I got it right here with a big star next to it. I will send that.
Great. Um, so I will get that put together ASAP once I have that list cuz that additionally, we'll wanna start mowing pretty soon. Um, and then, uh, some ongoing issues. Um, so this one, this is a pain. Uh, so I, I kind of realized, uh, the way we've been using the reserve fund for the last couple of months has not really been by the books. Um, and this is something that, uh, you know, we screwed up a little bit and then accounting screwed up a little bit as well. Um, so essentially, the way the reserve fund is supposed to work is that, uh, departments go directly to the Finance Committee. Um, the Finance Committee will, by a majority vote, authorize a transfer to those departments from the reserve fund and then the departments have to actually, you know, take that money and, and take it out of their expense account, um, for whatever the expense is. So, uh, and we had just been doing it with the Select Board, just authorizing, taking out the reserve fund for specific purposes, which you're really not supposed to do. So, uh, accounting has gotten me a list of the votes that essentially will need to run by the FinCom.
Okay.
I will, I'm gonna put together a plan for, for a meeting to do that. Um, we also have, I think there were, it, there were one or two votes in there that, um, you know, really shouldn't have been, uh, from the reserve fund at all, so we need to kind of revisit that. Um, but, yeah, long story short, we're gonna have to have a meeting with the FinCom and, and run all these votes by them and then accounting will reclass everything.
I know that the one with fire, we had FinCom here and they did vote on that.
Okay, that's, that's good to know because I, I noticed that didn't appear on their list, so I guess that was the only, okay, so.
And then I think that, um, last meeting, we talked about taking money, I think it was like $500 for the drone thing, um, for highway out of reserve, but there's actually plenty in highway when we looked at the budget, so that's, that should be fine.
Right, and I talked to Dave and so that's, that's what he's gonna do, so we should be upset.
They should.
So, yeah, so that's, that's it for the, uh, my report right now. Um, there's tons of budget stuff.
Um, yeah.
But I know FinCom's probably not in the room just yet.
Not yet, no, but we do have Dave here, he can give us our highway report.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thanks.
Come on down, Dave.
We missed it.
No, perfect timing.
No, I related with it earlier, but.
No, you're fine.
Um, since we're all talking about money.
Um, since we're all talking about money. Um, I got the uh, the quote, quote bid for, um,
Okay.
It went out to, um, advertising, advertising yesterday.
Okay.
The quote was one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Which is roughly five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars over.
Yeah, what we have.
With all of the things that have been happening lately in the world, um, it went up. Um, so I ran some numbers today, well, actually, not today, but for a while, to get something. Um. I came up with, um, I can do chapter ninety. Uh, we, I started with a hundred and fifty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and I, maybe a hundred and twenty from the town.
Okay.
But we do got a big surprise, uh, Christopher, I told you that. But uh, we got a winter recovery assistance program.
Yeah, I saw that email.
Two hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And two hundred and forty-four dollars.
Great.
Um.
Does that have to be specifically used to help with the?
Every year to use.
Okay, okay.
So I would like to use it towards the road.
Okay.
Cause we can use it towards um resurcising and, and stuff like that, so that's a plus.
Okay.
That's these two hundred thousand dollars not coming out of our pocket.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so right, as a right, if I do a hundred and fifty, two hundred and eleven and town is a hundred and twenty, we're at four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna be short roughly enough, but another hundred and something thousand.
Okay.
If I was to go with two hundred thousand, it would be, um, roughly sixteen thousand dollars. But I'm hoping that, that we, that will wash out because of the better bits.
Mm-hmm.
On that.
Okay.
So, um, I have, I have a chapter ninety form right here for a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, I talked to Mr. Stokes about it, he said we need more, just have the uh, the select board do a letter.
Okay.
And we can raise it up for you.
Okay.
So, I thought good about that.
That's good. Um, when you're saying the one twenty from the town, are you talking about from the highway? Um, expenses, are you talking about? From the town like from a bond or from the town budgeting? Um, and is that worked into your budget for next year? Are you talking about like reserve?
Reserve, yes.
Or stabilization or, okay.
Whichever one is.
Okay.
Better to use.
Okay.
I don't, I, it goes out to bid, or the bids are coming back in, it's all done over the word. They opened up uh June sixteenth.
Mm-hmm.
So, Franklin County's gonna open them up, make sure everything is proper. They're gonna forward them to us and we'll go over it and then we, um, we'll wait until we figure out which one's the better, so on and so forth, then, then we'll have, um, during a meeting, we'll have your word to, to the law company.
Okay.
Who's gonna do it.
Okay.
Anything, so Mark, any questions?
Um.
You know, I'm going to ask, but.
Should we maybe start, have we been having a conversation with Sarah as to that one twenty, like where? That should come from?
Briefly about the bond.
Okay.
Um, wasn't too sure about the, the one twenty.
Okay.
I can give her a call later on tomorrow or message real quick.
Okay, yeah, I'd just be curious what her advice is.
All right, um, I got a quote for the Watson Park and for the court in that accessible.
Okay.
Ninety-three thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
Okay, um, so we have to separate the court.
Okay.
And what was the other one?
The Watson Park.
So Watson Parks will have to be on its own, that would come out of uh the trust.
Okay.
Um.
Wait a minute, that's a town road.
No, anything over there, I believe, we can double check. It's on chapter ninety.
Yeah. But if things go south, um, I'm not hoping, um, it's gonna leave me, if I put, if it goes up to two hundred thousand dollars on chapter ninety, it'll be, leave us with a hundred and thirty thousand in town until, um, July.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I mean, we don't have a new Watson Park right?
Dave, can you say we took this year and patched those holes and brought the road back to its width? And then next year, put an overlay on it?
Well, you hopefully wouldn't really do it, you would have probably do a, a, a shooting leveling shim on that.
Yeah.
Like this a lot, yeah. You would have to raise it up to almost.
But I, I would just wonder if we could do it in two, two sections.
Um, you could probably do the court if you wanted to, like, if you wanna do that on the road.
Mm-hmm.
We probably have, we mostly have that bit.
The court?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess Watson Park is not a priority. I mean, as much as I would love to do it.
Yeah, me too, it, it would, it would, the town would be nice.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, yeah, I would, I would, for me, it's like at a top priority because I just think it'd be wonderful, but I know that it's not.
Big divots were patched.
Yeah.
It would be a big improvement.
Yeah.
We, we, we can work on that.
Um, but I do think that the core, as far as like community and, and building this place up to where a community can use it is definitely a priority if we, if we wanna put that out to bed. Um, and then we'll have to look at maybe some sort of funding for painting and, um, the lines and the basketball, um hoops and, and posts. I don't know if there's, I don't know, I wonder if that would qualify for that frontage type of a, although we're not a business. Yeah, we'll have to see. For some of that active, you know, the, the health, healthy living type stuff that we had that woman come and talk to us about, that's involved with the, um, the, the farm share truck that comes, I wonder.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
I wonder if like the healthy living stuff would apply to like the ba- putting up basketball hoops for residents to use. I mean, it's outdoor activity.
Right, yeah.
Just curious, okay. Think, yeah, so if we, if we can.
Yeah.
That would be awesome. Thank you. Yeah.
Um. I spoke with Brad.
Okay.
About the gentleman.
Yes.
He's, he also has had the same problem back then too.
Okay.
With this driveway and, and that.
Okay. And what did he have to say about the situation of the town or the contractor just going in there and doing?
No idea about it.
Okay.
Maybe it was before him, I don't know.
Okay.
Who was the superintendent prior?
So, we sent letters to this gentleman and this is the response we got.
Yes.
Um, maybe it's an attorney question at this point, if, you know, our bylaws are
Right, right.
Such that we're requesting that he replace the covert. Maybe we forward this letter to our attorneys and let them know that.
Well, that bylaw, I think, has been in for a while, cause I've read it two or three different places.
Yeah.
So, he, he can plead as ignorant as he wants, uh.
So I think what happens, we've discussed, is that it goes to like a lien, right?
I mean, one, uh, one or the other, it, it has to be paid for somehow.
Correct, yeah.
Um, either we have someone do it or we do it, you know, if we do it, there's no money.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, usually on something like that, uh, lien would be put against his property.
Right, right, you know, and you won't be yourself, it'll be paid off, which would be roughly the same three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, what about, uh, whether from our attorneys? We're reminding him of his responsibilities.
Well, I think.
And our, uh, and the course that we would have to take.
Yeah, I mean, we can definitely, we can, if we wanna reach out to Copman and just let them know that this is the letter we sent them, this is, this is his response. Um, and then see what, what they recommend.
We also did DC some more.
Yes.
Uh, from a store damage.
Okay.
Uh, back in July.
Yep.
Um. We see three nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay.
Um, I'd use that to repair the cat basin over here on Russell Stage.
Okay.
One, just before the house, uh, right before the bridge.
Okay.
Um, it's, I'm surprised it's still standing up, one whole wall of coal in this mountain.
True.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not a really nice, uh, if you're walking or kids are walking around there, it would fall through.
Yes, and yeah, that's a good idea. Is that already in our general funds to use?
That is.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, that's in the, just in the, an account.
Okay. Okay.
No, we're trying to find somebody.
Okay.
We talked about second alternative for beavers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I reached out to Adult and Wildlife, which is for adult, Matt, or adult, I'm sorry, it's still. And he said that there is a a grant out there for beaver flow device.
Okay.
But you have to have all parties agree to it. And then you have to have somebody who's willing to pay for it and.
So the grant helps to pu- install it in the first place, but the property owner would have to agree to it. Okay.
And all it is, it's a call party that goes out and goes into our cage, but they can't, but they had it about years ago on that.
Yeah.
But you have to have somebody who wants to maintain.
So, we have to pay to maintain it?
Yes.
Okay, um.
The first, the thing, you have to, it has to be agreed upon with the landowner also.
And you said the landowner was not interested in?
Yeah.
But this isn't trapping, this is.
Right.
Okay, so maybe this would be something that they would be more interested in if it's not trapping or removing the beavers?
I can approach him.
Okay.
Um, I also thought we saw, need about the situation.
Yeah.
Um, we can also do a letter of demand to that also.
Okay. Okay. Um, if you end up working on the grant, um, reach out to Christopher, you guys can work together.
Glad.
Cause I know it's so much fun to write grants.
Yes. What do you have this?
Okay.
Hey, yes. Down on South Street.
Yes, how far down?
Well, just almost across from Dolby's driveway and then down near, uh, Matt's house.
Oh, no, is it the house in format, Dolby?
Yeah, he's the first one on the way. There's a, a flower on the bank there.
Okay.
It's the state flower.
Is it?
Our beauties, yeah. So just tell the boys to be cognizant of what's going on.
Well, they're not down there now, they're done for now. Yes, I'll remind them that.
Yeah, because uh, there's not a lot of it around.
Oh, really?
No.
You want me to pick it out and dig your house, wait?
Well, the thing is, I'm just bringing it up, see if we can save it.
Okay. What color is it?
It's a little white flower. There'll be more and more of it, no, a little plenty.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Bunches of it, but it is a state flower.
We know that. I also have, um, two bids, wait another third, actually now.
How many?
Wait another third.
You got a third one?
Yes, cool, waiting on it to come in, so.
Great.
Yep, that's for the calls. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
So.
I know, I don't blame you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Cause I, I, I talked to, um, DOT today about, you know, this is, I might not have enough funds, well, call them up. Um, right, we may be able to fund you more. Uh, I'm on, so we can't do this without, I'm gonna have something else, so. I do have two bids with me right now.
Okay.
And I'll, we can do it, or you wanna wait until next week?
Um, what do you want, what do you mean, we can go over the two bids, or do you wanna wait until we get the third one? Yeah, that makes, yeah.
That makes more sense, yeah.
Okay. I hope you have your reading glasses on to read this budget, cause it printed tiny.
Can I go home and get my magnifying glass?
You might need a magnifying glass.
You can do sheets now, books.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
There you go. I don't think he's quite there yet. All right, so do you guys wanna hold off on the dog license thing until next time? Cause this is, this is a lot.
Yeah, that's gonna be time for zooming.
All right, so let's, uh, motion a table that until next week.
Okay.
All right, so we can read that over.
All in favor, right?
All right, um, are we okay with taking a fifteen minute recess until? I think we're.
All right, vote twice, huh?
Um, so do we have to vote to that? Vote to recess for fifteen minutes until?
I think that would be.
Finance.
I didn't, I didn't set it up that way, I just set it up as the meeting starts at five, so if you just wanna hang out.
So we close this meeting.
It's when I say, when I said, um, select board from four to, from five to six and then finance from six to seven, we have to wait till six. Um, Josh taught me that.
Fancy. Um, all right, well, we gotta wait for finance anyways, so we'll take a recess.
This goes back to going.
Christopher, how's, how's your little girl doing with the COVID?
Uh, she's completely fine, you know, it's like, it doesn't, it has no effect on her. Um, I just got a negative PCR test like moments ago. Um, and my wife and I are feeling, you know, not a hundred percent, but uh, not terrible, so. Hopefully, hopefully I'll be back in the office very shortly.
Good.
Yeah.
Christopher, how'd you make out with that, um, email today?
Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't quite hear you, Dave, say that again.
I was in bed for four days.
I still can't hear you, I'm sorry, Dave.
Ah.
Yeah.
You hear me?
Just think of how bad it could have been.
No.
Oh, God. There's, there's, there's some crosstalk, Dave, so it's a little hard to, to, to hear you.
Hold on now.
That's good.
The uh email I sent you to, uh, send that paperwork and information to, uh.
Oh, yeah, yep, yeah, I sent that over to, to DOT. Um, I, you know, I, they, I, I, I looked at some other, um, past forms and it looked like they wanted to have uh, basically Kara as the contact, so I sent, I sent them her information.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Christopher. Um, Christopher?
Yeah, he's there. Yeah, I hear you.
Um, I got an email from Nicole at Kiki Law.
Uh-huh.
He was asking for, Tom wasn't here, so she's asking for his signature, I got that, but she's asking for a CCC or something like that, I don't know what she's talking about.
Uh, okay, you wanna just forward me her email and I'll, and I'll take a look and um, see what we need to do.
Oh, here it is, it is. It's the license from the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll do that. Uh, okay, I'll, I'll do that. I got um. Tom's signature anyway.
So she, she was asking us for the license?
Yeah, she said, I got the signed report, but it's not signed by Tom.
Yeah.
To a quorum for us. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make her happy, I got Tom's, but she's at, she said in the CCC is not attached. So whatever that means.
Huh, okay. Um, I can, I can see if I have a copy of that uh, in my files here, I, I would kind of think we wouldn't, but. Um, I mean, I think she would have to ask the Cannabis Control Commission for that, anyway, I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay.
Are we on break?
We're on break.
Can I ask why are we getting these small printed sheets and it's for twenty twenty-one?
Are you giving your wife a hard time?
No, no, why, why are we looking at year twenty twenty-one?
Oh.
But there's nothing else on here. Says twenty, twenty-one, eighteen, all that, but.
I don't know.
Joanna, Joanna, I'll reiterate my offer to resend the Excel sheets and, and make it a little easier to print out if you'd like.
Well, are you putting it up on the screen?
I am gonna be putting it up on the screen and I'll zoom way in, so everyone should be able to see.
I can do that, otherwise I'm gonna be printing another three thousand pages.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Wrong way.
And that's my husband, so I can tell him no, just.
That's right.
All I'm asking is, why is there nothing for twenty twenty-three, it says twenty twenty-one? Nothing about twenty twenty-two, nothing about twenty twenty.
I see twenty twenty-three on there, I don't.
We're lucky you have that. We're lucky you have that. We don't usually pass those things out.
Oh, okay, but.
To commoners.
Oh, I feel your pain, I really do.
Don't be silent.
You guys look at the same thing, I do.
Why is this making me sign in to look at this?
Sarah, are you getting a, is it giving you like a shared drive? Like.
Um, I know, I was just trying to download it so I could look at it. Oops, that's not my email, I just. Um. Hold on, I can't type and talk at the same time. Um, I was just trying to download it so I could look at a full version, but it's like wanting me to sign in, so that it might be.
He needs me seeing invoice.
Oh, you need me to sign this?
Invoices that we don't pay, we just send them and they pay.
Alright, I like that.
Must've been a grant, right?
Can I do that at home too? Do you need all this inside it? It looks like there's three lines.
Yes.
Can I get your signature there, please, sir? Alright.
This is my.
Almost.
He's going, it knows what it's all about.
Oh, my God, that's so tight, hold on.
Have you got the same sheet, sir? That's for sure.
Well, she's got it digital.
I think this is just for comparison, but I have a twenty twenty-three.
He's gonna put it up there, Paul, he already said he's gonna put it up there, so you'll see, okay?
Well, for twenty twenty. You guys sleep in the bedroom?
You're going to be.
That was your.
Kara, I just, I just resent the uh, the budget file, if you want to try to access again, I don't know why it was prompting you to sign in or anything.
Alright, let me try.
Give it a shot.
Did you get the ones I sent you?
I did, and they were asking me to sign in.
Oh. Thank you.
Yep.
It's not here yet.
I put that down as a senior moment.
It's allowed.
Away with that at my.
It's allowed. That's why they make elastic waistbands.
Right, TJ?
Absolutely.
Not seeing it yet, Christopher, but I'm gonna refresh. Nope.
I'm gonna need a ruler to follow this.
Still not coming through?
No, hold on, it's letting me open it, but it's, it, yeah, it's telling me that like. Most of the features aren't available.
Hmm, okay.
Let me see if it came in my phone and. No, that's okay, yeah, he's resent it. I don't know.
Maybe.
You better hurry up and figure it out. Nothing yet, Christopher.
Hmm, okay.
Did it send on your end?
Yeah, it said, it said it sent at five fifty, so.
Did you um, try sharing it with me, like in the um, in one of our shared folders?
Yeah, here, I could, I can try doing that, give me a second.
Alright, so I'll go into one drive.
Carrie, you want to share your screen and show me what it's doing, just cause I, I, I can't. It's telling me I have access issues as well, so.
Oh, that's weird, okay, hold on.
Just when I try to, just when I try to view it online.
Oh, you have to let me share screen.
Yeah, will do. Alright, try now.
Okay. So this is what I see. Um, of course, the bar, see how it, there's like this little. Arrow thingamabobber up here, it's saying they can't get to my account. Um, I have to sign in again, I'm still seeing it, but it said that I would not see all of the features, I don't know if that's gonna make a difference or not.
Uh, it, I think you're seeing it, um. Yeah, it looks. Yeah, scroll down a little further.
Okay. Oops.
Yeah, this is, this is the most recent version, so I think you, I've got it, I don't know why it's giving, you know, it, the, the account sent me a, it's a protected sheet. So I don't know if that, that's creating some kind of issue. Um, but.
Okay.
As, you're seeing the version that, that we need, um.
Alright, I'm gonna stop my share so you can share yours when, when you're ready.
Yeah, sure, it's uh, do we have finance in the room yet?
I have one member here with us.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna step away for two minutes, then I'll come back and share my screen and we can.
Okay.
We'll be here.
Sounds good. Dinner. Free snacks. Seaweed's good, they've almost worked their way through all of it. I mean, it's a healthy snack, I can't complain. They smell when they eat it, though. It's, it's gross. Yeah, it's smelly.
I tried it, that was like.
I mean. I like sushi, but I didn't care for the seaweed. Each their own, you know? Those healthy snacks just keep coming, though. I think it was like a five thousand dollar grant we got. It's great.
I want to put a gym in the uh, new garage, those snacks.
I know, with all, no, they're healthy snacks, Dave.
Well, yeah, they're healthy.
Look at this has, this is a pop chip potato.
I want sodium.
I'm on sodium, I don't worry about that yet. I'm not that old. Hundred and fifteen milligrams. I ran into a friend of mine uh, this weekend. And she told me, I prefer retirement, she said, yeah, I'm forty-two, and I said, no, you're not forty-two, cause I'm forty-two, and I'm a year older, she's like, no, you're forty-three. And I was like, I'm forty-three? I didn't know, and you just start to forget.
Oh.
And my birthday's in September, I mean, it's not like it was recent.
Uh, to be forty-three again, right, Tom?
Right.
But I lost like a whole year.
They were not COVID.
I've been telling people I'm forty-two.
I thought I was gonna watch that before.
We'll try to send it to you again.
I can see it, um, I don't know, it's just telling me that like I'm not really signed in, but it's, it's mine.
Well, you know, I have my problems. So I've been paying attention to everything. Everything I'm eating shows you've got no cholesterol, what the hell happened?
Well, that, that raises cholesterol too, you have to, you have to. Yeah, I mean, your body needs cholesterol, but not a lot.
They're good stuff, but.
Hey.
Like bacon.
I know exactly where my body stores mine.
Fifteen, yeah, me too. But uh, my, my uh, thing was uh, oh, maybe about fifteen years ago, they were doing a free thing down at Stop and Shop. My cholesterol was four ninety-five. And the bad one was over two hundred.
Oh, my God.
I, I forget what it was, and uh, so I went to the doctor, you know what they put me on?
What?
Niacin.
It helped?
I, I've been on Niacin ever since, and my cholesterol's been perfect. I'm one fifty and uh, with the good sugar and one eighty with the bad stuff.
Your picture of health.
Oh, yeah. I tell myself that every morning, my crawl out of bed.
When you look in the mirror.
But.
That too.
He just sent me a diet, he says, look, there's a little bit. And I did. And Nancy says, well, that's not gonna work. And uh, but he didn't give me any medication.
No. That's probably good.
Yeah, especially since I've got. Both my blood pressure and diabetes. Usually high cholesterol goes wrong.
Yeah. Have you guys talked to Janet, do you know she's?
She's supposed to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't get to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about it, but, but it, we're gonna talk about it before it goes on the warrant anyways.
Right, because like you, you won't even be able to have. You won't be able to have a horse if your kids want.
Yeah, I don't want a horse, that's fine with me, but I do want my chickens. Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know why that's. It doesn't make sense.
No.
Alright, so I'm looking up the numbers from Chester for the police situations, so they wanted to do. Ten percent. So what's the difference of two thousand?
It says twenty twenty-three.
Well. He's recommending, Chester's recommending thirty-five thousand for the chief's salary. And. Twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty for the department salaries. Um, so by increasing the salary to twenty-four. So it's, I think that means her hourly, so that's increasing to twenty-four hourly, she requested meeting her halfway and additional coverage to thirty-five hours.
What?
I said, you said two thousand twenty-one.
So the pay rate for officers is gonna be twenty-two hourly.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're going from, sorry, she's going from twenty-two to twenty-four. And the coverage from twenty-eight to thirty-five. Okay.
That's not gonna break our bank.
It's not gonna break our bank.
Are they still thinking about getting an electric cruiser?
I think it's gonna be uh, what do they call it, crossover?
Yeah.
Uh, it'll run on electricity until electricity runs out, then runs on gas.
Yeah, cause uh, I was looking into it and uh. You know, you, you're, you're at the scene of an accident and you're sitting there and you've got all them lights going and everything like that, that's.
Better switch it or you're gas, or you're not going anywhere. That's why, yeah, I'm not totally sold on this.
No, I'm not either.
Uh, I'm looking at, at trucks, that's fine for the guy like me, I had a truck. And I run it sometimes for four weeks at a time. But you take it, put a snowplow on a truck and try and run it twenty-four hours a day, it's not gonna work.
No, not. Of course not.
We've gotta trust them. Alright, so we are back from our recess, we have finance, um, six oh five, we're gonna start reviewing the budget. Um, with finance, and so I'm gonna turn it over, back over to Christopher, who's got um, the PowerPoint up.
Great, um, yeah, so I'm just gonna run through this PowerPoint really quick, it just touches on a few key themes for the budget. Um, and should give everyone some context, uh, and then we can either. Jump into the capital spending plan or the operating budget, depending on, um, you know, how people want to approach it. Um, but that's, that's my kind of uh, plan here, and I know, uh, you know, we were hoping to have an executive session after this. Um, with uh, with counsel, so. Um, you know, we'll aim for wrapping this up, uh, hopefully by seven thirty, does that sound realistic, Kara?
NRV.
Okay, alright, well, we'll go for it. Um. So yeah, so just uh, just to review a couple of key themes for this year's budget, obviously the big story uh, macroeconomically is inflation. Um, so according to the Consumer Price Index, there's been an increase of eight and a half percent since last March. Um, so that's, you know, that's just something that, um, you know, is gonna have to be acknowledged, obviously with municipal budgets, we never really keep pace with inflation because of Prop two and a half. Um, but we get, you know, it's, the state helps us kind of make up the difference most years, but that's a big, that's a big di- difference. Um, speaking with accounting this week, um, they gave us the, the most recent revenue projections for April. Um, so there's been a fair number of decreases in local receipts, and that really just has to do with the fact that, you know, for a few years, we really weren't collecting what we were supposed to be. We kind of caught up, uh, and then had been having really strong projections in revenue in those areas for a while, um, and now we're kind of back to, to normal. Um, so that's, that's just something to account for. Um, and then also with the, the gateway budget, um, so our assessment has continued to decrease. Um, so we've got another drop of a hundred ten thousand dollars this year uh, in that assessment. Um, so that's providing some flexibility, and I'll return to it later, but um, there have been some discussions about an education stabilization fund. Uh, and kind of figuring out how we, we budget going forward for that, that item, which is. Uh, and kinda figuring out how we, we budget going forward for that, that item, which is obviously, you know, it's, it's the largest item in our budget, really. It's one and a half million dollars generally, so. Um, moving on to revenues and state aid. So I think one thing to mention, uh, is that, you know, we saw a lot of new growth. Um, so uh, when we did the tax recap in December. Or when we set the tax rate in December, we um, saw of uh, over five hundred thousand dollars in new growth. Um, I was trying to kinda track down the story behind that, um, and according to our accountants. Um, that's actually the, the pilots, uh, the solar pilots showing up. Um, so the way they were processed is as personal property taxes. Um, so we saw a huge expansion there. Um, so that's bumped our levy limit up from three point one eight uh, to three point nine one uh, for FY twenty-three. In terms of the cherry sheets, so, so state aid, um, you know, we saw some modest increases over last year. Um, obviously, those numbers aren't finalized until we get, you know, the actual signed budget, um, you know, in July. Um, at this point, you know, there hasn't been a huge difference between what House Ways and Means is saying and what the governor's saying, so. We've got a reasonably good estimate of what the final number will be, uh, unless the Senate diverges markedly from where they're already at. Um, and then just, you know, after speaking with accounting, uh, so as of April, our projections for overall revenue. Are at uh, four point four oh eight million. Um, so keep that number in mind as we look at operating expenses. Um, I will just say upfront, we're, we're fairly close to that number, um, with the budget that the FinCom has put together. Um, you know, there's some, there's some details that we still need to iron out. Um, but also, it's obviously, it's, it's a projection and, you know, it'll, we'll get closer to reality when we have the numbers from May as well.
Okay.
Um, so really high level for, for the, the finance committee recommendation uh, on the operating budget. Um, you know, I think there are a few things that they, that needed to be accounted for, uh, inflation. Um, the fact that we have this report from the Collins Center laying out, you know, what our wage and salary and stipend salaries, uh, stipend salary uh, schedule should be. Uh, and then, of course, you know, we had the directive to provide two and a quarter percent increases for all salaries. Um, so we'll, we'll get more into the details, obviously, on this in a moment. Um, but roughly. What we're looking at there is a four point four one five million dollar operating budget. Um, so you'll note that that is more than what we have for revenues. Um, but we're actually fairly close and, and depending on a few different. Uh, ways that we could project revenues and expenses, um, you know, we might be right on the money potentially. Uh, the capital spending plan, um. So we looked at free cash, uh, retained earnings from the water department. Um, and we'll hopefully also discuss ARPA funds, that, because the town does still have some outstanding ARPA funds to work with. Um, you know, the main themes here, we're gonna continue to try to build reserves, uh, and the stabilization funds. Um, there are some capital requests that came in during, you know, from those department requests we saw earlier this year. Um, so particularly with, with highway and um, some other departments, we'll have to, to discuss those. Uh, and then, you know, I, I recommended because we actually still don't have a full year operating for the municipal light plant. Um, that we continue to put some money in their stabilization account, um, just so. We have a little bit of flexibility while we figure out exactly how much it'll cost to run that enterprise fund. Um, and then, as I mentioned, you know, we'll wanna think through the use of remaining ARPA funds. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on really quick here is this, this idea of an education stabilization fund. Um, you know, this is something new that we would have to create. Um, I, I can jump into this a little bit more when we talk about the overall capital spending plan. Um, but the idea here is that, you know, essentially, um, you know, we've been over budgeting for education for the last few years, just as a strategy to make sure we're not. Um, caught off guard because this, our assessment goes up and down pretty wildly from year to year. Um, the, the idea here would be to, you know, take some of those savings, put them in an account. And then we, we don't need to over budget going forward. We can just know that we have a pot of money there for when there is a, a significant swing in the assessment. So like I said, I'll return to that when we get to the capital spending plan, but that's kinda the overall. Um, themes that I wanted to touch on, uh, with this very brief presentation. Any questions from anyone on any of that kind of overarching stuff before we actually get into the details?
No, that was really helpful. Thank you.
Alright, so um, finance committee, do, do you have a preference on, on where we start? Do we wanna start with the operating budget, revenues? Capital spending plan?
Well. Um, I think the revenues are pretty straightforward. I don't have any questions. And the. The amount, the total amount of the revenues being very close to the operating budget, I think that's where you're going to have to. Um, address anything that's. More than obviously what's within the revenue total, so. Um, I'd say. Well, the operating budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so I'm, I'm pulling up the uh, the expense budget here, and I will. I'll rewind us all the way up to the top. Um, how can, are people able to see this okay?
We have a copy in front of us too.
Good.
Looking at the FY twenty-three uh, general fund expense budget report, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Let me go back up to the top. Um, hold on, let's give everyone a minute to find it. Do you have it there? Want me to help you find it? You got your magnifying glass? Oh, my God, that makes me dizzy. Okay, hold on. Okay, that's not it.
Go ahead, Paul, move closer.
We select board, if they have any questions, and um, the only thing I've just said in terms of. Doing it as timely as possible is to address anything that's out of the ordinary from what was. Requested and recommended, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. That makes sense. Um, I'm not seeing it. Here. I'm just looking for the, the printout of that. I don't see it in your packet. Is that it there? No? No.
I don't see it in the.
No, that's not. I'm looking at the one that has general government account name.
How in heaven's name can I push print?
FY twenty-two. Then FY twenty-three.
Twenty to twenty-one.
Do you, um. Fourth page in the packet, let me see. Um, the other thing, the other option is, Tom and TJ, if you wanna pull a chair up there and look at the screen, that might be helpful.
Yeah, we'll have to join Paul.
Yeah, twenty-three is another.
Yeah, no, that's not. Do you guys wanna do that? And let me see if I can, sorry, hold on a second, Christopher. Let me just see if I can enlarge this a little here.
Yeah, it only has. Yeah, so if there's. Why, why did that happen?
There.
Uh, Tom, you wanna move to see it?
Yeah, but I, the thing that I'm looking at is.
It's not the right, that's not the right one.
No.
Down front.
Yeah. I would just pull up a chair. Alright. Alright, I think we're all set, Christopher. We've.
Alright, so, so it sounds like Janet, um, you were suggesting kinda just point out any areas where we're kind of, um, there's some major changes or anything like that.
That makes, yeah.
Yeah, um, so you know, one thing I, I would note in here, um, yeah. You know, Joanne, I, I think we all appreciate the great work you've been doing. Um, and. And I know we had been trying to stick with a two and a quarter percent increase for salaries. Um, you know, what we ended up in here with was, um, raising your salary up to. Um, within the pay band that was recommended by that Collins Center report. Uh, for your position. Um, so that's where that uh, nineteen thousand eight hundred thirty-six and twenty cents figure comes from.
Yeah.
So just something to note, um, other. I'm gonna scroll through for other big changes. Oh, just something I wanna mention here. So with the reserve fund, um, you know, our rule of thumb is try to keep that at one percent of the budget. Um, so we just increased it slightly. Uh, to forty-four thousand for this year. Uh, and when we talk about the capital spending plan, I can go to details about how we'll, we'll fund that.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Accounting consultant, thirty thousand, oh, audits. This is, this is one that I know the FinCom had questions about. Um, I finally managed to talk to Tom Scanlon, our auditor. Um, so essentially, uh, we've been budgeting for twenty-one, for an audit every year. Um, at this point, he said it's not clear that we need that. Um, so, so he said, you know, we haven't, we haven't had an audit this year. Um, he said likely, you know, in the, the fall, they'll probably do an audit of FY twenty-two. Um, so I don't know if that means we wanna keep this twenty-one thousand, um, since he'll be doing an audit in FY twenty-three. If that makes sense.
Okay.
But, but just going forward, he said, you know, probably the town is set up well enough that we could do it every other year. Um, depending on, you know, what we're doing in the bond market, so, um, just wanted to clarify that.
Great. Did you know that we actually got fired from our auditing company years ago? So.
Yeah.
That's really good.
Yeah, he, he told me a few years, he said a few years ago, they couldn't even really, there wasn't, it wasn't possible to do an audit, so, um, we're definitely doing better. Nothing huge on the assessor side. Um, I, you know, I'll mention that, um, Steve had uh, requested an increase for the contracting services from sixty-five thousand to seventy thousand. Um, he's also interested in looking at, um, a different company other than RRG. Um, so maybe a conversation for another day, but that's out there.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, with, uh, with Sarah's department's budget, um, everyone was just two and a quarter percent increases. Um, the contract remains the same. Uh, same with the town clerk. Um, we will have to discuss, um, the permit eyes issue. Um, but I, I think that's gonna be. I think that's gonna, we'll add that to that line item that already pays for the, the plumbing and the, um, the like, electrical inspection. Um, since that's already a per, it's, permit eyes is already paid out of there.
Okay.
So we can return to that.
Do we, um, oh, no, never mind, that's not the right, I was just thinking the, the dog officer increase that we know we have to add, but that's not the right place.
Yeah, that's, that's coming up in a little bit. I'll keep trying to move through here. Um, this is one I wanted to bring up. So Conservation Commission. Um, so the Conservation Commission Planning Board, as I'm sure Paul will tell you. Uh, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, are all kind of an interesting place in that they've been doing a lot of work for the last few years. Um, but of course, they're all unstipended. Uh, so. There's been conversations about having some kind of, uh, staff put in place. For them so, to create some support there. Uh, and I know the planning board at least already has some support from PVPC, and I think the zoning board does as well. Um, I'll just mention, I, you know, I talked to Dick this morning, and he said he's identified, uh, somebody who works for the town of Beckett. Um, who would be interested in providing part-time conservation agent services to the town. Um, so he gave me, this, this twenty-two thousand number is, yeah. So that's, um, that's basically, uh, the rate that this guy is being paid by Beckett. Um, and then I just, times, um, if he did fifteen hours a week, Di- Dick said he could do ten to fifteen. Um, so that's, that's what that is. Um, you know, I think there's a. There's a question for, for the select board and for the FinCom about, you know, what we wanna do with those three boards, because they do a lot of work. Um, but obviously, that, you know, that, this is what it would look like if we had some kind of position, uh, just for one of those. So I leave it up to you, but those are, that's the, those are the options there.
So the, under the recommended, the five thousand, that, is that for a stipend for the?
This is, this is current, this is actually just currently what they have. Um, so the Conservation Commission just gets up to five thousand dollars. Um, now, in terms of the stipend recommendations from the Collins Center report. Um, I believe it added up to eight thousand dollars, so that's, um, that was, that just for the stipend. So it would, it was two thousand for the chair, and then fifteen hundred for each member. Um, and it might actually have changed, it might be a little less now, because I think John just resigned, right? But, but we still might wanna budget for the full amount, assuming that we actually, um, you know, fill up the entire membership.
Right.
So, and so that's, that's about what it would be for each one of those, for planning board and for zoning board appeals, so it's eight thousand each. Um, so that's, should just give you an idea of, of what it would look like if we were to do that. Um, we can come back to that, but I'll, I'll, I'll move along a little bit here. Um. Alright, uh, town hall fuel. Um, so, you know, in certain instances where we were noticing that, uh, expenses really were. Um, getting out in front of what we had budgeted for this year, um, we, we just used inflation to try and. Uh, better budget for, for these, these items. So for example, with fuel, we just took our twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two budget and then added inflation to that. Um, so you'll see that a, a couple other times throughout the budget. Uh, I don't think there's anything else super, um. Notable in this, in this portion. Uh, the police budget. Um, so I think what I have here is, is Chester's recommendation, actually. Um, Kathy, you might have to check me on that.
Um, no, that's a good question, and I think, um, that was actually something we were talking about earlier. I think we have to look back into, um. The agreement that we came up with, with Chester to find the answer to that. Um, but I did have a conversation with Jason Forg. I know that, so what they've agreed to do, um, they're, they're increasing, um. The chief salary from twenty-two to twenty-four dollars, um, and then the hours from twenty-eight to thirty-five. And she had been requesting the forty-two hours, but we're hoping with the difference of the admin assistant, that that will sort of make up for that. Um, so with that, it's a difference between what, uh, what you are recommending and what they're recommending is a difference of two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, I mean, personally, I don't see a problem with meeting them at that point. It's, I don't think that's a, a large sum, and I think that we. This being, it's still sort of new to the, you know, new to us. Um, I think it makes sense to meet Chester. Um, we're still coming in way under what was requested, um, from Tammy, but. That, that seems to make sense to me. Um, but I understand where you guys were approaching it with the two point two five. Which I think is something that's gonna trip us up this whole budget process, because we're trying to stick to that, but yet we also are looking at, you know, what Christopher keeps referring to. Where we're looking at what, where we should sort of be paying people and how we're gonna.
Well, that's exactly it. I mean, some positions just were in the dark ages as far as.
Correct.
Being paid.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, it's those positions that seem that they can't possibly be doing to them.
Yeah, yeah.
We had asked her what her priorities were, and she listed the priorities in what order, and actually, her salary sheet was the last, so.
Hold on.
We kind of took into consideration.
Yeah.
What her thought process was as far as.
Okay. Great. Um, on this one that you're showing me, Christopher, I don't see the police salaries. I see the eighty-six thousand in. Expense.
At the, uh, that police salaries line is never, hasn't had anything in it for years, so we just put everything in expense, that expense line, for whatever reason.
Oh, I think that's because we just pay Chester.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, so that eighty-six matches Chester then?
Yes, I believe. Um, yeah, cuz that's, that's what I have in the notes here, is that's Chester's number. Yes, I believe. Um, yeah, cuz that's, that's what I have in the notes here, is that's Chester's number. I can, I can double check that cuz Jason, I, I, I just saw that text from Jason today, so.
He was giving me more details about salary stuff. I didn't see a total from him.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, take your time. Um, all right, some, some other things to mention. Uh, Berkshire County Dispatch, um, so we had been budgeting a, a little under two thousand dollars for this. Now we switched over to Northampton, which is free, um, so we don't need to budget for that anymore. Uh, Inspector of Animals, this is one that, uh, we had wanted to discuss. Um, so. We budgeted eight hundred in twenty twenty-two for this.
Yeah.
Um, this number here just reflects the two and a quarter percent increase, which obviously with eight hundred dollars, not a lot. Eighteen dollars. Um, and then, and the comment over here, you know, this is what Chester has been budgeting for that position. Um, of course, Terry also has the ACO position, um, which she had asked for six thousand. Um, you know, the, I think the recommendation the FinCom landed on was four. Um, and then just for kinda context, uh, her, the budget request in Chester for the same position was about twenty-five hundred.
So, um, to back up to the animal inspection, that is the position where she's talking about the fact that she's gotta drive out to. To every location in town and inspect anywhere where there's, you know, barn or animals. And we didn't have any, we didn't have any record of that being done yet. I don't know. It's been a long time since. So she requested, how much did she request from that?
Uh, she requested twenty-five hundred for that position.
Okay, um, so that's one I think we definitely have to look at because for the eight hundred, my concern is, um. That Terry won't take the position for the eight hundred. Um, and it sounds like it's something that we need to sort of catch up on because it's, it hasn't been done and we're definitely, oh, you know, somewhat of a farming community. Um, so my thought there is that we have to budget somewhere close to. Their request in order to get this, this job done. I don't know. What do you guys think? No, it's not giving herself a raise. She didn't have this position before, so the, so I should explain what, the, the person that had the position. Um, our understanding is, wasn't doing the inspections. And so she's saying she has to start that process from square one, which means going, you know, identifying all of these locations, which will take a while. Any location where there's, uh, a barn or animals being raised ou- outdoor, like chickens, pigs, whatever. Um, and then she has to drive out and inspect each, each of those locations, which is, I'm guessing a lot in Blanford. Um, so the position is sort of changing to what it had been before, to what it should be. So, uh, it's not so much she's holding us over, she's just saying, if you want the job done correctly, I'll do it because she's certified. But this is what it's gonna cost you for the job to actually be done. Um. So that's my concern is, I mean, if we say, no, we're gonna stick to the eight hundred. My thought is, the feedback we'll get is, okay, well, I'm not gonna accept it, which is fine. We can try to source it out to someone else. But we may end up in the same position where we don't have the funding available to actually get the job done. He was meaning paid the, but he wasn't doing the inspections of the facilities, is my understanding.
Is, is this open for negotiation?
Yeah, I mean, we just asked her, when we, we had reached out to her and said, would you be interested in this position because we know you hold the position in other towns? And you're certified, um, and she said, sure, but here's what it entails. We said, can you give us a price? Tell us what it would cost to do the job in Blanford. Um, so this is what she's proposing. Um, so yeah, I mean, we can, we can definitely talk about.
Yeah, make a counter offer.
Offering less, um, I think the eight hundred, to keep it at the eight hundred, just. There.
Yeah, that's out of the question, but if you, if you say you go to, to grand even. Something like that, you know, just a counter offer to feel her out.
And see if we can start there and then see what, you know, what that. Well, the situation with the salary was that there was supposed to be something that happened last year that never happened.
Don't we have to present this town?
We do, yeah. So is, are we comparing like apples to apples with Chester? Are there the same amount of?
I don't know, I don't know. Um, I did check, I did check what comedy calls she went on for the last quarter. And what was it? It was like, it was not her, not me. It was like one a week.
Mary, did you have a question?
Uh, I don't think it's fair to compare Chester to Blanford. It's not a shared services. Where Blanford, that's Chester and they should be. They, they shouldn't enter into the equation. If she's a certified animal control person or animal inspector. Um, she's, she has to know what she's doing cuz she has to go through rigorous training. It's, it's not, uh, one hour session.
So do we wanna put in that, um, recommended, the two thousand for ACO? And then we can explain on the floor that the position is changing and that we're gonna be meeting the state requirements, which we haven't been meeting.
Yeah, all right, gasoline.
Yeah, yeah. I mean.
You basically got presented to the county. And they have to say, you know, what they have, like, it's something that they.
So, does she think she drives for the town? Does she have a town vehicle?
Um, but we did have a vehicle for the animal control officer, but. But I don't think that she does. I think she uses her own.
Probably shut up if she asked to take an animal.
Yeah.
She can take it in that vehicle.
So she saved money there.
So let's.
Does she ask for reimbursement for gasoline?
All right, so let's do that to two thousand then, the ace, the animal inspection. Um, and then, so the next one we wanna look at is animal control, so.
She's only asking for a thousand dollars when she met with us. Why do we down level it?
So, okay, so it looks like the budget request was six thousand. What was last year? We're, now we're talking animal control. So the, so that we, that one went from eight hundred to two thousand because the position is changing. She's, she's taking on the entire role that hadn't been done before. She's asking for twenty-five hundred and we were saying two thousand. Oh, sorry, yeah, we were, she's requesting twenty-five hundred for Inspector of Animals. That's the line item one twenty-six. And we said two thousand. It's, uh. Above emergency management? Christopher's changing his end.
Yeah, you're agreeing to pay two thousand. On her request that she had sent submitted to us, she had three line items. She had salary expenses, well, four, inspector and inspectors expenses. The animal inspector, um, prior was eight hundred. She is requesting a thousand.
Oh, I'm seeing the request as twenty-five hundred.
That's the expenses. So she has control expenses, it's twenty-five hundred.
No, I'm seeing Inspector of Animals is twenty-five hundred.
She, she has, so she had a line item in there that we don't actually have in our budget, right? So we have an animal, we have an inspector of animals line that includes salary and expenses for that, that position, right? And she requested, she had a, a specific request for the expenses for the animal inspector. And a salary request for the animal inspector. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think that's how she presented it.
Okay.
That's up to fifteen hundred on her request.
So may, this might, maybe this is a typo.
So then let's, let's change our recommendation to the fifteen hundred then. And then, can we, we should probably add another line there, um, and separate it, Christopher, just so that. When we go to the floor, the town knows that it's salary and. Um, budget. Okay. Um, are we good to move on to animal control?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we've got the FY twenty-two was at the thirteen hundred for the stipend. So it's the stipend that she wants increased, but it, so she's asking for six thousand, but that was because of an error. What had she requested? Is it three thousand what she was supposed to have gotten, Christopher, last year?
That's just, uh, that's what we had for budgeted, uh, last year. Now, are you asking about what she, uh, what, what she said Josh had promised her versus what, and she ended up actually getting? Yeah, um. I, let me see if I have it in my notes, hold on. Do any of the FinCom members have that in their notes? Cuz I don't have that in my comments on the side here.
What she told us when she came to meet with us.
Yeah.
Was, uh, Josh had promised her.
Four thousand.
And she didn't get it.
And she was only making the three.
Right.
Okay.
And now she's asking for seven, she's asking for six. What we recommended was four thousand ninety, which was four thousand plus the two point two five, I believe. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this should be, this should be four thousand plus that two and a quarter.
Yeah, so four thousand nine. So what was her reasoning for the six?
She didn't give it, give us the reason.
Okay, then the four thousand ninety is what I would, would Tom TJ, what do you guys think?
I think her tone was the four thousand. Yeah, I agree with the four thousand because you got two thousand dollars.
I mean, aim for the stars, right? But, um, if we don't have an ex, yeah, that's fine. I agree. Okay.
One question, how, how did she not get what she was asking for?
There was some mix up in accounting.
Okay.
So, um, the animal control expense is going up from the two hundred and fifty-seven to the two thousand?
Well, so this is, this is just, uh, this line here is just what she spent till the, to the end of the calendar year. So she, yeah, it's two thousand, so it's just level funded.
Got it, okay. Sorry, I couldn't see that.
No, no worries.
Uh, no, we, I don't think we've had any. Have we had any requests for?
That should be under her, uh, animal control expenses.
But, okay, let me just read, I guess what she says, I should have done that.
Okay.
Really, um, this is what she requested when she came before us.
Okay.
And the animal control expenses last year were two thousand dollars. And she had opted to three thousand dollars saying extra one time additional ad, I'm sorry, one time additional. Thousand dollars for brakes and tires for vehicle.
Oh.
And I think that's why we knocked out to two thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't sound right to me. Tires. What? We shouldn't be paying for her tires.
If it was a town vehicle.
Yeah.
But this is her asset.
It just didn't seem right to me, that's why I'm questioning, I don't.
So I would say let, I mean, when, if she asks, we can kick that back to her and say, you know, if you, since there's a town vehicle available. Then, you know, that's your choice. If you, if there wasn't a town vehicle available, then maybe that would be another discussion, but, yeah. Yeah.
They get new equipment for our assets.
Yeah. Yes, I just saw it the other day. Yeah. No, that was a request from previous. All right, what's next?
Did you guys agree to four thousand or four thousand and ninety?
Four thousand ninety.
That's a two point two five percent increase.
So Tree, is Tree Warden, um, Christopher, do you mind sliding that over one so I can see what this year was? Thank you. True, so Tree Warden's leveled, okay.
Yep, Tree Warden is level. Um, okay, here's a, here's a big one, uh, school stuff.
Yeah.
So we currently in here, we have the alternative assessment method budgeted for. So this year, that alternative assessment is about one point five million. Um, and I believe the, I probably have it over here, yeah, statute, so that's a statutory number. Um, so it's lower and, um, that's likely what will get passed. Um, just because, you know, not all six towns will agree. Um, so we'll, we can return to, you know, what to do with that excess amount. Um, but, uh, that's generally been our strategy the last few years, is budget for that alternative, so. Um, vocational education, um, so this account has been overdrawn, uh, it was overdrawn in FY twenty-two. Um, and, and in FY twenty-one, um, I'm not totally sure why it's been under budgeted for. It looks like what we need to increase it about sixty thousand dollars, um, to. To meet our obligations, uh, going forward. Um, I need to basically reach out to, to each of these schools and get a sense of. How many students we still have and are likely to have next year. Um, because the assessments they give us are all based on that. But I'm not, again, I'm not sure why it was so under budgeted previously, but it, it has been.
Did you get numbers from Gateway? Did they give you?
I, I haven't gotten, um, no, I haven't gotten numbers from, from them. You mean on, on how many we send or?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I haven't seen those yet, um, but I can, I can reach out to them.
So I think in the past, that's where we budget based off of, is the numbers we get from Gateway. Because, you know, there's a deadline and I think it's April is the deadline for kids to apply and get in and then. And then we, and then they have to come before the select board if, if it's later than that because we haven't budgeted the money.
Right, okay, I'll, I'll take a look at, um, at what numbers they have and, and we can adjust this amount accordingly.
Okay.
Uh, vocational education, I have to plug in, um, whatever that LaCrensky bid is. I think it's similar to this. Two hundred. This, this is one that our notes say, Ask Kara, uh, Mars Consult Services.
Yeah, um. Do we still need that? I think, so we just signed the regional agreement, um. I don't know, to be honest with you. Let me reach out to Jason and Chester and see what they budgeted. We. We're not quite, um, we may have some more things. I know that we were still talking about. A couple items, uh, some, some, uh, amendments to the regional agreement that we're, we're like cashing out. So they might still be working with us. Um, but I can find out for sure. I'll ask Jason.
Okay. All right, and then another, uh, big department, uh, highway. Um, so some of these are, are unions, so we didn't really have any, um, you know, I'm just gonna hide this, this one column. Oh, I can't, never mind. So yeah, so some of these are union contracts, so we don't really have much say over them, so the salaries, everything but Dave's is set by that union contract. Um, overtime salary, um. David requested forty-five hundred, I think, um, the FinCom recommendation was just to level fund. It actually, it looks like we still have money in that account for FY twenty-two, so. And then for a lot of these other ones, uh, we, you know, we just looked at inflation. So highway expenses, um, level fund, but then increase by the amount of inflation, so that's what that thirty-two thousand three hundred forty is.
Okay.
Let's see, clothing allowance, that's, uh, also a union contract, um, so don't have any say there. Vehicle maintenance, same story, we took level fund but add inflation. Let's see, what other ones we got here? Yeah, I mean, that's, so generally that, that was the strategy, um, the garage door, uh, maintenance repairs. So David had requested a pretty big increase in that from five thousand to seventy-five hundred. Basically because they, I think they're over budget for that in FY twenty-two. It looked like that was all because of a door repair though, um, which seems, it was a one-time thing, so I think we, we determined we could just level fund that.
Okay.
And then, uh, you know, and then we went with, with, well, this says request, yeah, so we went with Dave's request on the, the highway repair, uh, number. And then for salt and sand, uh, the finance committee went with level funding at fifty-five thousand. Um, I know we're pretty far over that for FY twenty-two.
That's okay, yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, and then, yeah, for the rest, it was just level funding. Uh, that's no longer a thing. We'll have to, uh, my notes say placeholder here, um, I, FinCom, I'm gonna have to ask you because I, I have two different numbers for, or maybe I'll just go right to the source and ask TJ.
The, uh, cemetery funds, yeah, that's correct. What we, well, what, what we did here is we were taking, uh, five hundred dollars out of the, uh, expense and put it into the salary. That was, you know, what I had asked for.
Okay, so I think, so, so what I was seeing was the numbers weren't, weren't quite adding up. So we have here, so this is FY twenty-two. You have a total of eighteen thousand three hundred sixteen. And then, so it seems like maybe we just have to add a little bit more to the salary. Um, because if we move five hundred out of the expenses into salary, we're still three hundred sixteen short, so. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's with the two point two five increase in salary?
No, um, and this is another, this is another question. If that two and a quarter, uh, extends to all stipends. And I know, I know the town uses the word stipend kind of loosely, and so it's, it's not always easy to say, but, um, anyway, TJ, does this look, oh, well, you don't want one thousand three hundred.
You're, you're putting down, or, oh, that's a lot better.
Sorry about that.
Brady scare. We're doing, uh, we're, we're, we, we hired a company to do the maintenance. I lost my, uh, two best workers and, uh, I put out requests for, uh, people, you know, to hire people and I got requests from, uh, Springfield, Agwam, Feeding Hills, Pittsfield, you know, all looking for work. And I'm thinking, you know, that's a lot of traveling for sixteen fifty an hour.
Yeah.
You know, so, uh, I looked into it and I, uh, put up a feeler out and, uh, I had three responses for just a company coming in and doing the maintenance. And, uh, so I, I went through what the, uh, they were and of the three, one never replied back and then the other one said he didn't want to do cemetery, he was looking more for like parks and recreation stuff.
Okay.
And then this third guy said, oh yeah, he'd love to do the cemetery, so he started this week.
Okay, and that's budgeted in for next?
That's, that's all included in that budget.
Perfect. All right. What's next?
All right, um, so municipal light plant, um, you know, obviously they're, they're an enterprise fund, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll return to that. Board of Health, uh, I think we, we went with their, I think they, Jennifer just went with the two and a quarter increase for salaries.
Okay.
And then she also had budgeted in the, the new wellness position, um, so the wellness check position. To do that, I think she was taking, uh, yeah, let's see. Should be reflected here. Oh, well, it's not, it's in the same line item. So basically she wanted to take, uh, fifteen hundred from the expenses and put that into that wellness position. Um, so we'll have to figure out how that exactly gets reflected in, in this budget document. I don't, you know, there was some discussion about putting it back in this leave visiting nurses line. Here, um, so we'll, we'll talk to accounting about doing that.
Was she, hey, are they okay with their transfer salaries? I thought they were almost over on the salaries. Yeah, this year. No? They were close. So I don't, I'm just wondering if the two point two five is gonna be enough of an increase there from what I looked at in the last, I don't have it in front of me. The last, um, expense report? Here, let me see if I can pull it up real quick. Uh, email. Uh, all depend, all department expense report.
They're at sixteen to a three. So they're ninety-one percent.
Yeah, so they're over, cause they should be at about seventy-six right now. They should be at seventy-six percent and they're at ninety-one percent. So I'm just wondering with, is a two point two five increase gonna be enough if we're already over at this point? Are we? I mean, like, why are we over? Do we, are we over more hours? So I mean, if that's all she's requesting and she can keep it within her, you know, general fund, then I guess it's fine, but I thought it would be more, but, okay, that's fine.
Uh, okay, um, moving on, um, I gotta return to this, these library, um, budgets. Uh, I apologize, Nicole got me some updated hours and, and rates, um, so I will have to, to return to those. I think the FinCom had come to the, the decision that, uh, we wanted to bump the, basically everyone up to at least federal minimum wage, some of them are currently below fifteen dollars an hour. And then give Sam a corresponding increase in his salary as well. Though, even though he's already above, uh, minimum wage. And I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, anyone from the FinCom, but I don't think we were looking to expand Nicole's hours, which was in her request. So I think that's, I think that's where we landed in terms of what we were gonna grant them.
Okay, question, Mary?
Uh, we, we did extend by two hours the library services, though, don't forget, and we told you last year that we were able to cover that in last year's budget.
Okay.
To be prepared for an increase of two hours this year. And that would be pretty much the, um, library tech services. The assistants, the associates, rather than Nicole.
Rather than Nicole? Is that accounted for in the budget request for those salaries?
So.
Okay.
Yeah, the numbers didn't match up to what what was requested last year versus what was required this year. We were waiting for better numbers, that's all, so we don't know where it stands.
Okay, Nicole will get you.
Yeah, he said that he should. So, thank you.
Yeah, and again, I apologize, Nicole did get me the updated numbers and I just haven't had a chance to plug them in, um, with the FinCom's recommendations. So I, I will do that as soon as possible.
The other thing was, is I know partway through the year, she was doing an increase, she was doing it in July and then in January. But the increase that we would give would cover that for the whole year, so there wouldn't be the January increase.
Oh.
That makes sense, we would get it up front, they get it up front for the whole year, rather than halfway through the year.
And that, that bumps up the salary though, too.
It does.
Not, not a whole lot, but.
Right, right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll return to that one. Memorial Day expenses, um, I think actually we had, the FinCom had decided to bump this up and, um, that's right, Kathy, I have fourteen hundred here, but I think actually we had discussed increasing that.
Um, do we wanna look at, so Russell is getting a chain, hopefully, maybe getting a change of, uh, select boards this, this, uh, next month or so? Do we wanna look at the possibility of trying again with Russell Pond, or do we wanna? So that would be a five thousand dollar. My baby. It would be five thousand dollars added to the recreation, um, budget, but it would be sort of sitting there.
He probably doesn't know what you're talking about.
Oh, so Christopher, we, a couple years ago, we budgeted five thousand dollars, um, for, in the past, Blanford has worked with the town of Russell, there's a swimming area in Russell. The expense, and when we share the expense, it means that residents in Blanford pay the same price that Russell residents pay, which it's pretty pricey if you're not a Russell resident to belong to the pond, but it's really the only swimming area, uh, local swimming area. So we've been wanting to team up with Russell and offer them five thousand, which is half of their budget for the pond. And, um, and, and then in turn get the reduced price for our residents. In the past, it's been difficult to work with the select board, but they're, they are hopefully giving a change of select board. There, so, so if we want, if, if there's room in the budget and we can put it in there and then try for it again, it might be worth it. I know that the residents were really hoping to have that reduced price, but that seems that the barriers were, that were in place have been sort of eliminated. It wouldn't be Memorial Day, it would be rec committee.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, cause one of our stipulations was that the tickets be sold online, and I think that that's now happening, so.
So Kara, sorry, is that the thirty-three hundred plus five thousand, is that what we would be budgeting here?
Yeah.
All right.
No, it'd be, it was in rec expense. If, if it passes and we wanna try, then I'll, I'll give it another go.
Kara?
Yeah.
If it falls through with Russell, why don't we talk to the people over at the State Forest?
Over talent?
Yeah, and see if we can get Blanford people a special thing.
That's a good point, yeah, maybe see if we can offer some funding there. Yeah, that's a great point, okay, I like that.
All right, sorry, sorry Kathy, returning this Memorial Day expenses, am I mixing something up? I, I can't, I, did we decide to increase that line item?
We did. I think it was two off the top of my head.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, I believe that we decided not to.
Okay, thank you.
We, sometimes we get confused with Memorial Day because rec committee does the Memorial Day picnic and everything. So are those, is that two thousand dollars allocated just for what Doug does?
For memorial, I used some of it last year, that's why I asked him, what, why is it split up that way?
Yeah.
Because really, we spend more money for Memorial Day than we do for Halloween.
Yeah.
And everybody looks at recreation as being Halloween, but we have that memorial event that's recreation.
So should we?
Broken up that way. I know we get flowers, I pay for flowers and for, for Veterans Park and some different things like that. But most of the money of that budget is spent for, like, all of that is spent for, uh, for the picnic.
So should we change that and, and take a thousand away and put it into recreation for the Memorial Day picnic that recreation does? And leave just four hundred for Doug for flowers? I mean, cause that's really always.
It's not Doug in ways, but yeah, that, I think that that would cover the, the few extra expenses where people will come forward and say, well, I just planted flowers in Veterans Park, here's my
Yeah.
invoice.
Cause it seems like it's just kind of a confusing way to run it.
It is to me, but I was just using it last year.
Using? Under the circumstances, you can buy them for four hundred dollars this year?
Oh, absolutely. I, I think it was only like three hundred last year, and it's, uh, Eileen Gates that took care of it last year.
I don't think Josh was, um, planning, then put it to place updating that whole area.
No, because I have that.
That, we talked about that earlier, yeah, that's a to work in progress. There's a whole, um, no, that's, that's a work in progress. It's, we have to return a time it with North Blanford Row, but it would be this year. It's, you know what, it's an old thing, it was like that years ago, and I'm wondering if it was just done separately years ago, but now we do it together. So it makes more sense for the money to be in the rec fund as opposed for for Memorial Day.
And if we went over on memorial for flowers, I would just take it out of brick.
Yeah. So that works, Christopher, and then I would just leave instead of that two thousand, I would just leave four or five hundred in there, four hundred's fine, yeah. And that's just for, yeah. Perfect.
And this is just for flowers, is that right?
Yeah.
Maybe the veterans would be happier if you left it as it was and labeled it for parade and picnic.
It's not used for the, oh, it's not used for the parade.
Yeah, we don't spend any money on the parade.
Or whatever.
I think if we explain it on the floor that we just moved it to recreation, that people will be fine with that. They're still paying for the same thing.
Oh. Did, Chris, did you move that up to recreation, that extra thousand?
Yes, he did.
Okay. I have a short memory.
Be a good thing.
All right, and then, uh, I don't think, I don't think there's too much else of note. Scroll through this. Um, I'll, I'll return to some of this debt stuff when we talk about the capital spending plan. Yeah, there's some slight changes in our insurance. Our, you know, our workers' comp went up slightly.
Okay.
And then, our, um, professional liability, um, also went up slightly. If we pay those before August, we get a slight, um, you know, we get a slight discount, so we'll try to do that. Throw our numbers here. So anyway, just a note on that. So anyway, so, so that ends, right now we're at, um, four point four twenty-one, um, so that's still, still about twenty thousand over our revenue projections. I will make some of those updates, so with the library budget, um, actually plug in those numbers. And then, um, you know, you're very close, um, and I, you know, we don't actually have the May numbers yet in terms of revenue. So I, I'm not too alarmed. But any other thoughts on the operating budget before we, we move over to the capital spending plan?
Paul has a question, go ahead, Paul.
As I tell, I was wondering if standard group insurance help hundred and fifty-three thousand, which is pretty close to exactly what you have this year. And we never ever spend that, but is it a requirement of law or something? You're, you're budgeting for everybody that. You're you're budgeting for everybody that possibly get it. And most of them don't take it.
Yeah.
Just a recommendation from Sarah.
But if I were to guess, I would think that looking at your May twenty-eighth expenditure report.
Yeah.
You're going to spend about seventy thousand this year.
Yeah.
And this happens every year by the way.
Yeah.
So if you're really looking for money, uh, that would be a painless place to pick.
That's a good point, yeah, I wonder, so Sarah recommended budgeting for the full amount?
She always does that.
And then we, yeah, but we have wiggle room there anyways.
Like Karen is, and there are others, but Karen would never take it, she's got a much better plan at her age.
Yeah. Um, the other place we have wiggle room is the uh school budget unless we decide to stabilize. Position. Okay, so that's maybe just make a note there, um Christopher, and we can chum.
Because it's about twenty thousand dollars a person.
Yeah.
It looks like about three people, don't it?
Yeah. Okay.
We need to get a balance.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So if you do have to go in wages or where, wherever.
Yeah.
You can pick up anywhere up to eight thousand, I would never go that high, but maybe fifty or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely a few places where we could budget a little less conservatively and then we'd be um right on the money, so I'm not, again, I'm not concerned that this this operating budget is a little bit higher than our projected revenues for the moment, so it should be okay. Um, all right, I'm gonna stop share and pull up the capital spending plan. Um, I know Jane from uh MTC is here for the executive session, so I'll try to make this quick and then we can uh move over to that.
Okay.
Okay. Right, can everyone see this okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so just really quick, um, so I I'm gonna zoom out here for a second, and so I know things will be impossible to see, um, but I'll zoom back in. Um, so just a little background, so I just looked at um, you know, how much free cash we had certified in FY twenty-two, uh, how much retained earnings we had certified, uh, and then I also included our ARPA funds uh down here as well, so kind of just walk through those three pots of money.
Okay.
And talk about, you know, what capital projects we can spend on and what um, you know, reserves and stabilization funds we want to build up. Um, so this green one at the top, uh, you know, green, I thought cash, green, I just, that's the way my brain works. Um, so uh in FY twenty-two, we had five hundred sixteen thousand uh and a little bit more in terms of free cash that was certified by the Division of Local Services. In the past, uh, you know, I kind of just tried to follow what we've done with past budgets here. Um, so we've generally tried to build up each one of our stabilization funds. Um, you know, looking at um how much we had this year, which is slightly less in terms of free cash than we did in FY twenty-two or FY twenty-one rather, um, the kind of additions we can make to the stabilization funds are a little bit smaller. Um, but hopefully that still works, so um, so I was recommending here, transfer twenty-five thousand to emergency stabilization to bring that up to uh this number. Uh, can everyone see this okay? I don't know if it's
No.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, so a tr- a transfer of twenty-five thousand out of free cash to the emergency stabilization uh to bring it up to this number. Ultimately, the goal is to get that emergency stabilization fund up to one million dollars, so we've still got a ways to go. Um, but we're chipping away at it each year. Building stabilization, uh, same story, put, you know, transfer twenty-five thousand out of free cash. Um, that builds that up to a little more than seven hundred thousand. Um, I wasn't sure if we had an ultimate goal for that building stabilization fund. It seemed like we've just been putting money in it each year recently, but uh if if people have history on that, it'd be appreciated.
Um, I don't know if we have a goal, but I know that the project, uh, we, the original project at one point came up at five million, but we're looking at like, Tom, what was it, about two million were we looking at for the project for highway and fire?
Yeah, that's what we were looking.
And now with the crazy.
About between six and seven right now.
Okay.
The longer we put it off, the more it's going to cost.
Yeah.
This is why we're in the bind we're in, because.
So that's going to be a bond, that's, there's no way we're going to be.
It has to be a bond, yeah.
But, so yeah, we're just, so the answer to that question, Christopher, is we're just trying to put away to to pay some stuff down and not end last, but.
Yeah, okay. Um, municipal light stabilization, so so like I mentioned, um, you know, we still don't have a full year of operating expenses for that uh for broadband. Um, so I, you know, I was recommending a transfer of fifty thousand from free cash to their stabilization fund just for this year, so that um, you know, we have that wiggle room.
Yep.
Um, and then with library stabilization, we've committed to uh putting twenty-five thousand in it each year, so that would bring it up to a hundred fifty thousand for FY twenty-three. Um, and I I, this is my lack of knowledge about it, I don't know if that fund was specifically set up for when we do the expansion of the library, or if it's actually going to be used for ongoing kind of capital spending at the library, so um, maybe, maybe Mary's in the room and can enlighten me on that, but.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, um, we we set it up as something to work for towards the expansion, so that should we apply for state grant monies, we could say that the town is fully behind us and supporting us and look at the amount of money that we have already in hand to move forward. And we have discussed the possibility at our last trustee meeting of possibly funding, we have to survey the the property so that we know exactly where our footprint is, and we had talked about using that uh library building stabilization fund for the survey, because that's something that's not budgeted for us, so.
It would be part of the expansion program.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, it would be. I mean, we can't, we can't expand without knowing where we're going to expand to.
Gotcha, okay. So, so down here I have, I have the easement survey, uh, and then Mary, I know you had a bunch of other um capital requests um for this year, so it sounds that the easement survey is the only one you're looking to pay out of that stabilization fund?
Right, right.
Okay.
The the others are um.
Probably this capital projects account.
Capital projects, they're, it's a town building. So we look to you for maintenance.
Sure. All right, well, I'll just, I'll just move these down there then. Um, and you don't, you don't yet have an estimate for the the easement survey, right?
Uh, no, we haven't.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll plug that number in um when we have a, an estimate so that we can get an accurate um number for what that that account will be in FY twenty-three. Anyway, so that's just what I wanted to to go over with the library. Um, moving on to other free cash transfers, so I mentioned earlier that we want to make sure that we bring reserves up to forty-four thousand, this is forty-three thousand, hold on. There you go. So again, that's just one percent, roughly one percent of our operating budget.
Okay.
So um, this is the the transfer from free cash required to do that, uh, a little more than twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and then the last uh free cash, um, well, not the last, but um another free cash transfer would be a hundred thousand to the capital projects account. Um, that's just what we've done in past years. Um, and I've listed below here a few different capital projects that have been requested um that we could potentially authorize spending on.
Okay.
We can return to that in a second. Uh, and then the last couple items for free cash transfers, um, I talked to Sarah about this, so road bond debt, um, she said um, a hundred two thousand is the minimum that we'd want to do this year.
Okay.
And then for broadband debt, the minimum is ninety-seven thousand. And just a note on the broadband, um, so right now that's on a ban. Um, so a bond anticipatory note. Um, so we are expecting that a federal grant will come in and allow us to to pay down that debt. Um, there is a somewhat of a complication in that, uh, you know, the the debt is with the town, but the funding would be going to an enterprise fund. Um, so it's a question for accounting and town council. Um, but I think it it appears right now that there's no issue. Um, so, so the plan is to keep that on a ban for the moment. Excuse me. Um, so those were the proposed free cash transfers, um, that would leave us um with sixty-three thousand in free cash. Um, the the kind of rule of thumb for free cash each year is to to, at the beginning of the annual budget cycle, they have three to five percent of your your budget. Um, so we usually try to leave a little bit of free cash um at the end of each year to make sure we start with a positive sum the following year.
Mm-hmm.
I'll I'll get into the education stabilization account in a second, but um we might, you know, we might already have some uh some free cash to start with next year that we can already anticipate. Um, so if we feel there's a need to dig further into this amount, um, we may be able to do that.
Okay.
All right, so that's free cash, um, and we can come back to these capital projects in a moment. Um, when it comes to retained earnings, uh, so for the water department, uh, it's pretty simple, I just followed what we've done in past years. Um, we put uh five thousand in their stabilization account, and then we put the remainder of the retained earnings in their capital account.
Okay.
And so that builds it up, um, you know, I I think about ninety thousand over what Gordon had requested this year. Um, so you know, that might not be necessary, but that's just what what we've done in past years with retained earnings.
Okay.
Um, all right, and then ARPA, um, so we've, the town's expended uh about a hundred sixty thousand dollars of the the ARPA funds that we received. We still have um one hundred seventy-six thousand. I've included a couple requests that have come in in the last few weeks here, so uh I may have mentioned this at a past select board meeting. Uh, the assessor's office is interested in purchasing some pictometry software. Um, essentially what that it would allow them to do is more accurately observe what kind of improvements have been made at various properties around town. Um, so they can more accurately appraise them. Um, and so they think ultimately this would pay for itself because they would get um additional uh property tax revenue out of it.
Okay.
That hasn't been vetted or anything yet. Um, and I I believe uh Harald made the same request last year, so I don't know if anyone recalls any conversations around it. Um, but anyway, that's, that's one request that's out there. Uh, and then ano- another recent one we got uh was for the Chester Elementary School Playground. Um, they're looking to do a sixty-two thousand dollar upgrade to the playground. Um, and the request that uh I believe her name is uh Gianna Briggs, could be wrong about the name.
It's just spelled funky.
It's just Gina.
Gina, yep.
Gina, Gina was just asking for ten thousand from uh from Chester, Middlefield and uh Blanford. So that request is out there as well.
Yeah, um, raised, I think, a good amount already, just through local funding um and fundraisers, so they're trying to go to each town to help with the other half.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, the elementary school, um, they need a playground.
They have one?
They have an older one, it's just for the little littles um for the preschool, so they're looking for something for the um the rest of the the kids there. They don't have anything for like first grade off, I think it's only the preschoolers that are allowed to play on the the, it's like a small playground for little kids. So. And God knows how expensive they are. Craziness.
And then you gotta come together.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Christopher. You need a cup of tea and some aspirin, you feeling all right?
Uh, I'm fine except my, I'm losing my voice as you can hear, so.
Yeah.
Um, um, so I would just say, you know, so this is the number we have to play with in terms of ARPA funds. Um, you know, it it may, it may be a longer term discussion about, you know, how exactly the town wants to, if, you know, if we want to take a strategic approach to using the remainder of those funds, they can't be used to um build up reserves or stabilization accounts, and they can't be used to pay down debt. So that's some major restrictions on them. Um, but uh some to be aware of.
We've been trying to balance it out so far between um like local businesses and you know, some town things that will help everyone in town, like, you know, roadwork and stuff. Um, but I I would say that we've been favoring small businesses, we really want to help and encourage small businesses in Blanford. Um, but I think we've hit all those that have applied so far, so we have, um, we've got to talk a little bit more about how we want to divvy up the rest, but we'll see.
So that'll be a longer term discussion, uh, and then before I completely lose my voice, I'll move over to education stabilization. So really quick, as just kind of a reminder about how this conversation started. Um, this is, this is what our assessment has looked like um over the last um seven or so years. Um, so it goes up and down pretty dramatically, um, and we've been on the down slope for the last couple of years. Um, but basically, you know, the idea is, you know, and this is what Chester has done, you know, we we budget each year for this um alternative assessment amount. Um, that doesn't pass, and the statutory amount for us is lower. Um, so the question is, do we just continue over budgeting, um, or do we actually just create an account to to account for that? So I'll zoom up here. Now, if anyone can see this okay?
Yep.
So the green amount here uh is the actual assessment we've had over the last three years. Um, so you can see it's gradually been going down from one point six five million, and now it's at one point four six million. And then the blue up here is what we've been budgeting. Um, so for FY twenty-two, we budgeted the same that we did in FY twenty-one. And so the result is we have, um, you know, a bit of a savings here. Now, my thinking was, um, we take, and this is a little complicated. Um, but we basically, we take uh, you know, a portion of those savings um and potentially some portion of um the difference between the alternative assessment amount and the statutory assessment amount, and put that in a sta- in a new stabilization fund specifically for uh, you know, education. Um, and so that fund would then start out with about a hundred six thousand. Um, and that's pretty much in line with the average um jump that we've seen. Um, if you return to this, this graph, so in those years where it did um spike up, you know, it's it's in that hundred thousand range. Um, so hopefully hav- having stabilization fund at that level would ensure that um, you know, we can, we can just budget, um, you know, accordingly uh and not be caught unawares when we do get a a hike in those assessments.
And then do we leave it at that a hundred, do we leave the balance of that stabilization account at like a hundred thousand? And then, or do we continue to? No, because we wouldn't have anything next year to put in it, because we'd be budgeting at the regular, okay, never mind. I answered my own question.
Well, you know, no, it's, it it just depends, you know, I mean, if we're you know, so for example, next year, well, who knows, you know, maybe there'll be a change in uh what is it, Russell and Montgomery, are those the two towns that never go along with the vote?
Yeah.
Um, you know, maybe there'll be a change in those towns, and we will want a budget for the alternative assessment. Um, so, so things could change, but I think if we start out with about a hundred thousand in that education stabilization fund, um, that would, that would work for the moment.
Yeah, that's great.
And, you know, some of the savings that we have this year, um, since we budgeted you know, one point six five million and are actually, our assessment is only one point five. We could actually, part of that, you know, will will go into the stabilization fund, but then part of it, we could transfer to cover the We could actually, part of that, you know, will will go into the stabilization fund, but then part of it, we could transfer to cover the uh vocational education account that we over drew
Okay.
for this year. So I'll I'll lay that out. I've got, I'm putting together kind of a plan for year-end transfers and overdrawn accounts. Um, so that'll, I'll spell that out there, but um that's the the general idea. Any questions about the capital spending plan or the education stabilization accounts?
No.
Account. And I know, I know this is a a lot of information. Um, and I need to send everyone, you know, a copy of this with a with an overall budget narrative. Um, but that's, that's kind of the broad strokes plan uh for this year.
Um, I think that that was, you presented it really clearly um and organized and it was easy to understand, so I appreciate that. I I don't have any extra questions. Looks good.
Oh, I I go back into the uh selectmen slash administrator secretary there. I thought we were going to uh give her a a raise.
We did.
Not just the 2%.
We didn't. We went way, we went much, we went up to um 19836 and it was, um it was 15.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we did.
I must have fell asleep.
You might have been sleeping during that part. It happens.
Thanks.
You've been staying awake now that you sit up here.
Yeah, because everybody's looking at.
So I got a spray bottle.
All right. Well, thanks for everyone's patience. I will, uh, I'll send all those materials around with kind of an overall budget narrative. Um, so everyone can have it in front of them. And obviously, there's a a few items we kind of need to adjust. Um, and of course, we'll, you know, we'll get new projections in May, et cetera, so things will change slightly. Um, but Mary, I hope that's enough for your annual town report. I can send you whatever you need.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, um, it's exactly, it's exactly 7:30. You were right on, Christopher. Um, so we will make a motion to close the meeting to go into executive session, not to reconvene. Um, so, hold on, let me read my spiel. And accordance with GLC 30A, section 2182, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if any open meeting may be determined effect on the bargaining, the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, as well as executive session in accordance with GLC 30A, section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of r- real property if the charity place opening may have descended to rental effects, the negotiating position of the public. Kara says yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I'm gonna leave Zoom on, but we're gonna turn the recording off. And um Jane, I'm sorry to keep you, we're just gonna wait until our room clears out and then we'll let you know.